Hello, everybody.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, everybody.
Okay, Bill, I'm comfortable starting if you are.
Okay. Paul, the May eighteenth zoning board of appeals meeting to order and Nick, you want to take a roll call?
I do. So this is the first time that the zoning board of appeals has met under the new open meetings act. So I just want to provide a little bit more instruction for everyone. You know, we typically do a roll call here at the zoning board of appeals anyway. But it appears all of us are attending virtually, so we will just have to state that we are attending virtually and then what municipality we are in. Presumably everyone, it'll be Bath Township. But you know, if one of you happens to be in East Lansing or somewhere else, then you'll you'll state that. And that only applies to the zoning board of appeals members themselves. So with that having been said. Al Marigi.
Here, I East Lansing, Michigan, at my office.
Okay. Harand.
I'm here, Robert Turan, Bath Township.
Okay, Dan Kramer.
Here, I'm attending remotely from my home in Bath Township.
Daryl Kessler.
Uh, Bath Township, here.
And Seelanders.
Here, Bill Seelanders, Bath Township.
Sorry, I said that wrong. I apologize. Okay. It looks like I got everyone. So we have five people here. So we have a quorum.
Uh, need to approve the agenda. I think we have somebody has to make a motion to do that.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Oh, second. I'm a, by the way, I'm an alternate. So do we need me to be involved in this?
I would say not necessarily because we only need four, correct?
Is the alternate, though, is the alternate only when we don't have a quorum? Or is the ultimate pulled in when we don't have a full slate of board members? I'm not sure.
The full slate is five.
Oh, is it? Okay. So then you could stay on that basis, right?
I would say so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So we'll let you in, Rob.
Thanks. I'll try to keep my mouth shut.
So we approved the initiative to take a vote. All in favor, approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. Disclosure of conflicts of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest? Member of the VFW or veteran of a foreign war or anything like that that would conflict with carrying out the board's business? Don't think so. We have a general public comment now. Anybody in the public who wants to say anything that's not on the agenda? You know, speak now. Approval of the minutes for the last meeting we had in November seventeen of two thousand twenty.
I moved up through the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed. Move on to old business. I don't believe there is any old business hanging over us. The new business is the American Legion Ray Parker Post four twelve is seeking a variance for reliefs of their property fifty-four eighty Clark Road pertaining to signs for the office or commission, commercial use. Is somebody here represent, Dave, is that you who is talking for the VFW post?
We have David Finley who is here.
He's muted.
Business who's designing the sign. Leo Cowdery is here from the VFW.
Okay.
Am I muted? There.
Yeah. Hello.
We can hear you, Leo.
Hi, hi, Nick. Can I, can I break in here a minute?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I'm Ed Emery from the, I'm here representing the Bath American Legion. So and Leo is also here with me, but I I'm on head of the sign committee, so I've been following this since the beginning. I'm working with David Finley from Icon Signs.
Can you explain to us what you're looking for in your variance and why you think you need one and deserve it? And what we have to talk about this evening?
I I can explain the circumstances if you would like me to. Is that okay, Leo?
Yeah.
Great. So I do apologize because I think the wording that I had provided within the description was perhaps not the best. So the way that our sign ordinance is currently written for a monument sign, it states that the total surface area shall be no greater than sixty-five feet if that sign is set back five feet from the edge of the property. And it says that the maximum surface display area can be increased by seven square feet for each one square foot of additional setback beyond those five feet, not to exceed one hundred square feet. The sign that is being proposed here is two point five feet by, I believe that's nine feet.
Yeah, it's twenty-two and a half square feet.
Having issues with math today. So, okay. So from that regard, it's it's correct. It is just the placement on top of the pillars then, as I had originally written. Just the the definition of a monument sign doesn't allow for the sign to be on top of the pillars. It would need to be between them.
Well, it calls for it to be under five feet.
I'm sorry?
It calls for them to be under five feet. It's what it calls. It didn't say between the pillars. It just said it had to be under five feet tall. It can be over five feet to the top of the sign.
Yeah, that's exactly right. There's nothing that I can see in the ordinance about the sign being between the pillars. The the issue here is just that it's over five feet. And so that's the, that's the problem with the ordinance. That's why it conflicts, as far as I can tell.
That's what I thought when I looked at this stuff.
My apologies for my confusion on this. So, yes, I guess that that is our our conflict here. That would be section eighteen point oh seven of our zoning ordinance, signs for office or commercial uses in all districts. Under point A, which is freestanding signs, and then subsection four is monument signs. And that would be point. Why am I having a hard time finding the point which?
Point E under item four.
Okay, thank you. So it's it's a subsection E there states that the maximum sign height shall be five feet, which includes the the column or pedestal base. So I suppose at this point, then we would just ask the applicant to make their case.
There's also an issue of illumination that I'd like to have him address.
Okay, I guess, Rob, could you elaborate on that?
Well, my understanding is the application talks about blinking lights. If you look at the letter from the commander. Where did I see a reference to? My understanding, did I misread that? My understanding was that they were gonna, it was gonna be illuminated. Maybe we should let the applicant explain.
Okay, let's, you know, unmute. There we go.
It says a digital.
This is for an illumination illuminated sign. My name is David from Icon Sign. Correct.
Now, if I don't, either David or Leo talk about what the sign is going to do and its function, others.
The sign is for advertising events. I think part of the sign is just a regular digital sign with a sign attached to it. They're looking to do it, use it for events, you know, advertising things that are happening at the VFW or at the American Legion. And um, the the issue that we're having with the sign is that the setback on a sign currently is thirty-two feet from the road. So you can't really see the sign at all from the road within a hundred feet of either direction. That's the issue that we're having. You can't see the sign. And so we're asking for it to be put on top of the pillars to increase the visibility of it. Just because right now it's it's really hard to see the sign. I think we've sent some pictures for you can, for you to reference, you can actually see what we're talking about as far as not being able to see the sign.
Yeah, I drove by there a couple of times today and you really have to look for it or you're you're driven by it before you can see it.
Yeah, I found the section I was referring to. It's the last couple of sentences on the third paragraph that the sign will be displayed. Compliance messages not to change more frequently once every twelve seconds. It's a digital sign and it also talks about brightness level. So I I wanted to address the applicant to address those two aspects. First of all, I should say that, Bill, I totally agree with you. You can't see the sign. There are bushes and in a cyclone fence on the on the east side and there are two trees on the on the west side. It's very difficult to see the sign, no question about it. But I'm curious how they're going to change that situation and still remain in compliance with the ordinance.
Yep. May I speak? Okay. Yeah, Rob, what what we're trying to do is, because you can't see it very well, we we want to put it up approximately thirty inches higher and that's what the variance is for. So we can put it on top of the pillars so we can get some visibility. Now, I've talked to the neighbors on the east side of the property, neighbors right in front of the property across the street from our post and a little bit to the west of our post. I didn't see any problems. They didn't have a problem with it. We've talked to John on the north of us about, actually, he he said it was okay if we cut back some of the trees to give us a little bit more visibility. But that the sign itself is to help us let the public know about our events such as Memorial Day Parade. When we have maybe a veteran pass away funeral or something like that. Or we're honoring the police department or the fire department. So that that's what our variance is for. We we just have a tough time. I used to advertise in the Duett Bath Review and that's gone now. So we're kind of limited other than Facebook where we can advertise. So we're we're looking to put this up and and I, it's gonna help me because I do the post service hours here and I help veterans. So I can put days out that I'm actually here. Now, we don't plan on keeping the sign on all night. The only thing we wanted to do was have four twelve portion of that sign, says American Legion, perhaps have that on at night. But I believe our our intention are is to shut the LED off around eleven o'clock, approximately when we close at night. And and then maybe kind of trying to work that out, but that that's our intentions. And also, the sign is, according to David Finley from Icon, totally adjustable as far as light. It's dimmable. So if it's too bright, we could turn it down, unlike other signs that are very bright. So it, we can control it from inside the building instead of having to go out and roll a sign out and change letters on it like they did twenty years ago. So it's it's gonna be a big help to the American Legion here to for us. We've been working on it for many years and it's been a long process. So that's why we met with David and he's worked with us very well to get the sign up. But that that's our request to really put the sign on top of the pillars and which would be about thirty, thirty inches more. And I think that makes it up to around what? Seven, some feet, seven, seven, half feet tall. Oh, I hope that answers questions.
If I can jump in here, I'd like to share my screen and pull up the part of our ordinance that references digital signs. I think that'll alleviate a bit of the concern that I've I've heard here. So section eighteen point one four, that's not the right tab. Eighteen point one four of our zoning ordinance references digital signs. It states that the digital sign cannot change more frequently than every twelve seconds, which is something that was addressed in the letter. You know, again, the transition period of one second or less, which was addressed in the letter. You know, it may not contain any visible moving moving parts, alternating or moving messages or have the appearance of of those moving messages or parts. Excuse me. It outlines some other things that can't be on there in terms of just visual effects. Additionally, the brightness is addressed. It states that, you know, during daylight hours, it cannot be brighter than two thousand nits. And that during, you know, from dusk until dawn, it cannot be brighter than one hundred and twenty-five nits. So our ordinance also addresses the brightness there. And then in terms of operation, it states that the sign cannot be on except between half an hour before opening and half an hour after opening. So you can be, it can be on during hours of operation plus a half an hour beforehand and a half an hour afterwards. So I I hope that alleviates those concerns related to the actual digital display itself.
Ed, who owns the property to the immediate east where the cyclone fences and all the brush? Is it the VA?
John Rish. Superior Car Care.
Okay, that's not you. It's not the VA.
No, no, I, American Legion does not own that.
American, American Legion. Okay, they don't own that. All right.
And uh,
It looks like the lot line runs basically right through that fenced area and the vegetation, from what I can tell.
Yeah.
Yes.
So to me, it's not clear who is responsible for that vegetation, whether it's the applicant or the other property.
I I talked to John a a month or two ago and and anyway, so I, he mentioned about, he he'd like to tear that down and and I said, well, maybe we can help you out. Well, we we'd be willing to do it for him. We're down, clear some of the brush back. Enough that he's happy that it doesn't, we don't want it shining right in his eyes. So we we are more than willing to work with John or the neighbors as far as clearing areas and being a respectful neighbor.
And you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, so the, I guess the, to me, I just don't understand why raising it two and a half feet is gonna solve any of these problems. When I look at the picture of coming from the west, you raise it two and a half feet, you're up in the trees even more there. Coming from that direction and coming from the east, I think you're likely to get a little bit more visibility. But you know, those that shrubbery right there can still be growing. I I just don't understand why raising it is really gonna do what you want it to do. I mean, you've got room in the setback to bring it out to the front door. I understand that that involves probably greater cost, but that by far would give you greater visibility than raising it two and a half feet, given the vegetation that you're pointing out in pictures here. Seems to me.
Um, our thought on that again is with the sign up, we have a digital display. I mean, it's, people will see it. And unlike the one that we have that is buried down below, if there's a car parked in the way, they can't see that at all. So it is above parked cars because our neighbor right in front of us does park his car out there and it would just be over the top of that. So we would get a better visibility. Plus, in the winter, without the leaves, we're gonna get a lot better chance to let people see it. And and again, our our role is to help veterans out and so we could, we could put our our message out there. Which is something that we've, we've been working on for a long time. So that's, that's why I would like to get it up there. And then we could, again, we could post events that we're gonna have. Like, for instance, we're gonna have a, hopefully a food truck come in here for the Legion members and maybe the community, and we can put it out there saying, on this date, we're gonna have this event open to the public. So but it's harder to go out there on the old sign, if you've ever seen it with the letters and wind blows them off. So we're looking to improve our post and and help the community out too, which we try to do. With that, we, I mean, we do donate a lot of money to the schools and so on, but it it's more of a visibility thing for us so we can get our message out. And I I I think raising it up there would be a great idea. It gives us the a bigger sign than one that's just down below that doesn't say anything. And so it's, again, we've worked on it a long time and we we hope that we can get your approval to put that through the variance.
Is the existing sign illuminated?
No.
I didn't think.
Below the pillars, but it's just, it's on it at at night. Not, it just, yeah, the light shines on. It says our our post and that's it. So this one brings us, just like the high school, just like Gunnisonville Church, just like the other VFWs and American Legions that have gone to LED signs. The old signs are basically not around anymore. And a lot of people want to put them up way up high. We don't have that luxury. So this is, this is kind of where we found a good point, place to be, to put it up on top of there. And we're, we're, we're good with that for a while.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that the digital sign is not a problem. That's not a problem at all. You have the right to put a digital sign there. All we're talking about really is the height of the sign. I mean, that's, that's the variance request. The digital sign really is, is not important in your request. Yeah.
That's the problem I'm having with it is that, you know, we have the ordinance that says five feet and you guys want to go higher than that and sets a bad precedent for doing, you know, lots of sign, you know, signs for the future.
I do have David Finley unmuted now.
I I was going to say that, um, part of the problem is is because he's set back so far. He set back like thirty-two feet to the actual sign, which creates a real visual problem for them. And when cars park out there, it's even more of a visual problem. If we could set the sign up higher, we actually did a site survey and we think that would actually be beneficial for them to let the sign up higher. And it's not gonna create any more of a problem for anybody else by raising it higher. That's why we're actually requesting it.
Can they move the sign closer to the road, Nick, and still meet inside the ordinance?
No.
No.
Okay, we're ten back, we're ten feet back from the right away, ten foot six back from the right way, but we're thirty-two feet back from the actual road.
My assumption is that the neighbors received letters and there were no objections to the applicant. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What if the existing sign with its dimensions and and the exact location of the existing sign, what if that was removed and this new illuminated digital sign was put in that location? Would that solve the problem?
No, because then we would be even less visible to the public. It says so someone mentioned that. We're actually trying to get something bigger.
Yeah.
See, because it's between the pillars, you have limited visibility anyways. So when you're standing at the end of the driveway, you can't see the sign at all.
Pardon me if I'm wrong, but does our ordinance not say uh, five foot from ground level? If they would, they found a round that signed up thirty inches and brought some fill in and filled it against them columns. And brought it within compliance to the five foot, they'd still get the height they wanted. I know that's how they, it's been done in other municipalities far as an ordinance and height.
That's just cheating, isn't it?
It's still right. It needs the ordinance.
So you're saying, take the existing sign down.
No, leave it there.
And just bury it.
Bury the columns only, the earth around it, up on a mountain. You go down in Iowa, Des Moines, they put the same type of restriction in and that's why you can't see anything. And they've got these small signs up on top of these mounds going along in front of all the stores. But it, because they're basically are five foot from ground level. If they raise the ground, then they'd be meeting our ordinance.
I suppose if nothing else, I appreciate the creativity.
Well.
I I don't see, you know, driving from east to west, you can't, there's all that foliage at the cyclone fence. I don't see raising the sign is gonna affect that that much. I'd like to see them take that fence down or take the foliage down. I think it would dramatically increase the visibility of the sign.
And that's, that's what I I talked to the, to John Rish, to the east of us, and he had no problem with that, whether that, whether that's his or not. But we're more than willing to do that. And and again, I mean, it's, this is a part of the summer, but we're not open just in the summer. We're open all year. So we do have, in the winter, the foliage drops off, so people can't see it. So we're benefiting at least so much out of the year, you know, in the in the darker hours. So I mean, again, we're, we're, we're trying to be more visible to the public and the veterans that we serve. So and I, I, anybody appreciate. Part of the problem is. Pardon? So, so. David, sorry. I think part of the problem is, is that when people park their cars in those driveways, you can't see it at all. Right. I think part of the problem is is when people park their cars in those driveways, the sign isn't visible at all. It's completely invisible. And at least if it's up on top of the pillars, you can see over the cars a little bit, which makes it a little more visible. But currently, if there's cars parked in those driveways, which they usually are, you can't see the sign at all.
Have you given any thought to putting on a, on a post up in the air like the ordinance allows? Have you given any thought to putting on a, on a post up in the air like the ordinance allows?
I don't know if putting on a post would really help us because like they said, there's actually trees and stuff around there. So we'd actually be putting it into, we'd be blocking it even more probably by lifting it too high. Uh, it wouldn't be a problem for me, but I think that, um, the best solution would be to put it on top of the pillars. Just because i- if it's too low, it's blocked by cars and everything next door to it. And if it's too high, it'd be blocked by the big trees that are around it. So it's kind of like a catch twenty-two. But we did do a site survey on it and we feel that, um, putting it on top of the pillars would actually gain them some visibility. Because they have so limited amount of visibility as it is.
So you, you've got, if it's a freestanding sign on a post, you can move that, the lower edge of that sign. To within ten feet of ground level. So it sounds like we're talking about a problem of two and a half feet. The sweet spot you're saying is seven and a half feet, but the ten feet is too high.
You're saying ten feet to the bottom though. So it's actually more like twelve, thirteen.
To the top of the sign.
Feet in height compared to seven, right, compared to seven.
Yeah.
So we do feel that, that is a sweet spot around, it's a sweet spot around seven feet. Because there are big trees around there, like really big trees, and those block a lot of the signage if we put anything too high. And we think that, um, we did, like I say, we did a site survey and we feel that being on top of the pillars would gain them. I mean, not huge amount of visibility, but more amount, or more visibility than they have now. Uh, because now they have almost none, but they do have a short amount. I mean, if you're driving down the road. You would literally have about three seconds to see their sign before it disappeared. If it was sitting closer to the road, it wouldn't be a problem low or high, but because it's thirty-two feet back. That's where the problem is. The problem is that thirty-two feet back, you don't have any distance down on the road that you can see whatsoever. You know what I mean? I think, I think we did a survey of like eighty feet from the sign and we can't see it at all. And on a road, eighty feet isn't very far.
Yeah, I mean, this just seems like a very temporary solution. I mean, you don't know at all what the vegetation is going to be on either side, right? They cut down the tree, the tree dies, problem solved. On the east side, they cut down the bushes, problem solved. Um, they planted a tree on the east side, lower, smaller tree, you got a problem again. So it's just, uh, it just seems so, uh, very, very temporary, the, the kind of fix that you're talking about here.
I don't necessarily think it's temporary. I mean, we've had that other sign for how many years?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years. I mean.
I'm not talking about the, the life of the sign. I'm talking about its visibility due to the vegetation. That vegetation can change at any time, right?
And you manage it too.
Yeah, but you could say that about anything.
Why can't you manage it to see the sign as it is?
Because as the neighbors, they're the ones that have to manage it, not them.
Putting in a small tree and, and blocking it entirely. What's, what's preventing the neighbor from putting a made foot tree?
Well, I suppose nothing, but you know, we do talk to our neighbors and I personally went over and talked to four of them right around there. And none of them have a problem with what we're doing. They're, you know, we, we keep really good rapport with them. They didn't, nobody complained apparently as I have heard. So I, I don't, I don't see where it's going to cause an issue. It's going to help us and the community. So.
If I can jump in here, I'd like to share my screen again. Pull up the section of our ordinance. That's the, the standards for the zoning board of appeals. Just I hope that will shed at least a little bit more light for the applicant. There are four standards outlined in our zoning ordinance and all four of those have to be met in order for a variance to be approved. Uh, the first is that there are practical difficulties which stand in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the ordinance. And that there are special conditions and circumstances which exist that are peculiar to that land structure or building involved. And which are not applicable to other land, structure or buildings in the same zoning district. The second is that the literal interpretations of the provision of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. In the same district under the terms of this ordinance. The third one being that the special conditions and circumstances necessitating the variance did not result from the actions of the applicant. And the fourth is that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. That is denied by this ordinance to other land, structures or buildings in the same district. So I guess just to reiterate, all four of those have to be met. Um, it's a pretty high bar. Uh, but that's the way that our ordinance is currently written. And at least what I'm hearing from a couple of the, the zoning board members. Is there's a concern about precedent. Um, because I, I, I don't want to speak for any of the members because obviously I'm staffed, but I've heard, you know, at least one. Uh, member who's, who's stated concern about precedent down the road in terms of, you know, it may be a reasonable request. But it, it doesn't necessarily fulfill the conditions outlined in the ordinance.
But, but I think they do fall under all four of those. If, if you read those, they do fall under four of those. They're in a circumstance that nobody else has. They're thirty, they're thirty-two feet back from the road. There's not anybody else that really has those kinds of circumstances, you know what I mean? If you're, uh, if you're out on Main Street, you're ten feet from the road. They're thirty feet from the road. So that's their major disadvantage. And there, nobody else has the disadvantage that they have. And that's why we're asking for this in the first place. I, I think if you read those ordinances or if you read that, we fall under all four of those. The last one is the only questionable one. You know, they, yeah, the trees can grow and everything like that. But what we're asking for is we're asking for a solution right now to help them with the problem they have of the restricted visibility. It's not, it's not really fair to them that, um, the property, uh, uh, the property line and everything has to be set back so far. You know what I mean? It's not really their, it's not their fault. So in turn, uh, they've got restricted use of a sign. Even, even if the sign is, stays like it is right now, it's still a restricted use. It's not doing them any good if they can't use the sign to advertise. And everybody else in that township can. Everybody else can. They can't. Because their sign is restricted visibility and it's not anything they have any control over. They don't have control over whether the neighbors. Do what they do with their bushes or the trees or anything like that. They don't have any control over that. All we're asking is if, if it would be possible for them to increase their visibility, um, with the restrictions that are around them. We're not asking for, you know, a bunch of special favors and we're just asking to raise the sign up high enough for it to be visible. That's all we're asking. We, we said we would follow the, we would make sure that the, uh, the twelve second rule was followed. We would make sure that the illumination is properly followed. They said they would run it at night. And we're really not asking for a lot of anything. We're just asking for the sign to be raised up. That's all we're asking for.
I, from, you know, reading those four things, I could give them C and, but the other three, I don't think they meet.
I agree.
Bill, I think Jason had his hand up.
Jason, go ahead.
So I, I, I pulled up, uh, Google Maps and Street View, um, and just because I wanted to remind myself what the visibility was. I, and ironically enough, uh, there's a temporary sign that's sitting in front of the, the current sign. That talks about a horseshoe tournament. And so I, I, I remember, I didn't. Dan had brought up earlier about it would be more advantageous to move the sign forward towards the road. I guess, I, I don't know if I missed it, but did we, is the sign at the current correct setback? Or is there room to move it forward?
If it remains.
It's actually the correct setback. It's, it's ten foot, it's ten foot six from the right of way.
Under the, the definition of a monument sign, it would be able to move to within five feet of the property line.
I'm just wondering if you just move the back column to be the front column and then put the sign as you would normally put a monument sign. Then you would, you would obtain, I, your objectives without needing a variance. I know that's added expense, I, but that seems to be a solution that you've exercised past with temporary signs.
Well, I, I mean, my, my opinion of this is, you know, we could move it out there. It's, it's quite a bit more cost for us. And, uh, I know driving in and out of the parking lot, if the sign was low. It's going to create a visibility for a, for a car, maybe not so much for a truck, but, um. I, I can see that as a, actual, a real issue with, um, visibility for approaching traffic.
I, I would, uh, me personally, I would, I would think that the ordinance would allow the sign to be a little higher anyways.
I'm just looking, I mean, that, that this temporary sign is at the same height. Um, I'm not sure if you experienced, uh, traffic flow issues, uh, when you had that sign there.
Yeah, there's a, plus, plus that, I mean, moving it out there with, with the permanent sign. Uh, there's no space between there that, that you're going to be able to see the traffic. I mean, you're going to stick your front end of your vehicle out into the road. Before you know, uh, during the day or something, what's coming. And I mean, I've experienced it myself. Uh, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not always easy to get in and out of there, even though the speed limit's, uh. I think reasonable.
And I'd like to say, address one thing also, if we, if we moved it forward, Jason, um, like what the temporary sign is now. Uh, the neighbors who park, uh, would, would block that at that height. Like they said, and also when we, when we have that temporary sign out there, leaving, um, the exit. Uh, it's, it's, it's a, um, a factor of, you can't see up and down the road very well. You know, sort of people leaving. It's one of the reasons we like the sign where it's at now. Just if, if we put it up on the pillars. It would help our visibility.
Thank you for, uh, explaining that.
The neighbors are actually parking in our front. Uh, we have like a flag lot. They'll park there at times, not all the time, but sometimes. And we, we allow them to park there because they have limited parking at their place. Um, they, they sometimes have, you know, three or four cars, uh, to park and, and they have nowhere to park other than, um, using, utilizing our front area.
Jason, could you go back to the street view for, for a second?
Uh, sure.
Did I ask that after you closed it? Okay, great. Um, so the front of that, that, uh, temporary sign that's towards the edge of the road is actually. Uh, a couple of feet into the setback, um, you know, with that five foot setback. So, uh, my estimate is that the five foot setback from the right of way is somewhere in the middle of that temporary sign. Um, I just wanted to give some, some context as to where that sign would be moved up to.
Thank you.
Me, the, the height of the sign is the problem. You know, we have an ordinance that says five feet or you can go way up in the air above that. And to me, going up higher is, is, is a better solution. You know, it's. May cost more money, but I, you look at the trees and the bushes and, and the stuff around there. You don't know what's going to happen to that. And, uh, if you're willing to prune the trees, the bushes now. So people can see the sign, you could probably be willing to, anything that grows up in a, front of a higher sign. Prune those too. It's, it's the heights and the precedent that bothers me about doing this.
Ed, I wanted to just, to say that we think it's great that you're there. I think it's great that you're there. And, and we want to try to accommodate you if at all possible. Um, but I think that you can understand what the difficulty we have. We have to enforce this ordinance and the ordinance makes it really tough. For us to do it, to do what you want. I agree with you. The current signage is not adequate. It's, it's blocked. You can't see it. And, and I'd like to figure out a way of giving you some, some more visibility. Um, provided whatever, whatever we agree to, uh, provided you comply with, uh, eighteen point four. The, the, the illumination issues, um, then we can, we can work from there. But, um, I'm surprised that the neighbors haven't objected, but apparently they haven't. And so if you're going to have a digital sign that's illuminated with blinking lights, um, and they don't have an objection to that, okay. Because you're entitled to do that under the illumination section. Um, but, but the. The location of the sign is where we have, in the height of the sign is where we run into a problem.
And I think unlike the high school and the middle school signs, it's not going to blink. They can do whatever they want to with their signs because they're not controlled by our ordinance. And I, I would hate to have to live across the street from one of those school signs. Because they go on and off all day and all night long. But I think the way the code is written, that the sign's not going to blink. I think that's right, isn't it, Dave?
That's correct. The sign is totally controlled all the while by the software. They were just going to appear. That's all they were going to do. One message at a time, no scrolling, no flashing, uh, the brightness of the sign is controllable. It's, it's, has an automatic sensor on it. So it can actually control itself. It might, it dims itself down by itself. And it's also controllable by this, so if it's too bright, you can actually dim it down even farther and have it at the starting point. So you can actually dim the sign down and then say, that's where I want to start from. And then it would magically adjust it from there.
I've been persuaded. I agree with you. I, I was originally concerned about the illumination question, but I, but I've been persuaded. I think, I think you're right on the, the right track. Uh, as long as you comply with eighteen point four, that's fine for illumination. It's, it's the other issue that we're running into a problem with. I would like this.
I know going higher is, there's, there was a picture of one side where they showed the tree. And that tree literally is about six feet from the ground and then blocks everything up to twenty-five, thirty feet above it. So there's absolutely no way they could put a taller sign in at all.
If I can.
Tree right there, actually. It actually blocks the whole sign.
If I can jump in here, I'd like to just point out what they're referencing would be called a, a freestanding sign. Uh, section eighteen point oh seven of our zoning ordinance, uh, point A subsection three. Says that a freestanding sign, the leading edge of which is at least ten feet, setback at least ten feet from the right of way. Uh, may be located in the front yard, says that it may either be no taller than five feet off the ground. Or in alternate, the top of the sign may be as high as twenty feet with the bottom of the surface display area no lower than ten feet. That sounds sort of what was described here. Uh, the problem, just based on my interpretation here is that. Uh, A two states that this, that type of a freestanding sign can only identify the use of the property. So they would not be able to have a digital sign on there. It would have to be solely just a sign like they have now that just states that it's the Legion post.
It's a whole other.
So I, I think that does add a little bit of, of complication to the issue.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. So where were you referencing that? Where did you take away that conclusion?
Yeah, I'll share my screen here again. Section eighteen point oh seven, uh, signs for office and commercial uses in all districts. Uh, freestanding signs right here under A.
Yeah.
Uh, it states the sign shall only can, shall convey only the identification of the permitted use. So. So, you know, my interpretation of that is they wouldn't be able to have any sort of messaging there that states, you know, upcoming events or things like that.
Well, that would mean then the requests under, the request they're making then for a digital sign would not be allowed either because all of, you know, section four just adds additional requirements under monument sign. So if all of the three previous conditions hold, then they can't have a digital sign anywhere.
If they tried to do a freestanding sign, then that would be my interpretation.
Wait, that additional, a monument sign is not a freestanding sign?
Monument sign typically has two pillars.
But why is monument sign under the section of freestanding signs?
It's a great question, but I didn't write it, so I'm not 100% sure.
Well, my understanding is that is, we do consider it a freestanding sign.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I do that section.
Can you scroll down even further?
Sure.
Maximum height shall be five feet.
I think I disagree with that interpretation, Nick. I mean, if I took that to be the way that we intended, and I remember writing, or thinking about this, there would be no digital signs permitted in the township because there's no exception made anywhere for where you can have digital signs then, or use, or maybe it's the wall sign. Is that what you think? Anything other than a freestanding sign, you can have it digital?
The more we talk about this, the more I feel uncomfortable making that conclusion, particularly on the spot. You know, of course, we don't have our zoning administrator with us this evening.
I don't want to kick the can here, but go to G. The, the planning commission may approve alternative sign location. If the monument sign, I can't, is approved?
Is approved as part of the final site plan review. So that would have been if they had had a site plan review, you know, and they tried to put the sign in at the time that the, the entire property was developed.
I see. I don't suppose that was the case when the site plan review approved the building of the building to begin with. Was that in the package?
I'm not sure.
I was wondering about that because that must be what happened when Fast Eddie's got their digital sign. Because they have a digital sign down there on the corner that they put announcements and stuff up on. It's up in the air. But it is a digital sign on the post right next to the road. But that was before we had any kind of electronic sign ordinance, I believe.
I think that's correct.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll just say that, I echo Rob. I really want to help here and I agree that the sign as it is is not working for you very well. It's just that I'm not sure that your suggestion is going to help much more. I think either a taller, I mean, a freestanding pole sign or moving that sign forward are probably better alternatives, or just cutting down the vegetation that's blocking the current position of the sign. It seems like asking for a variant pre-ordinance from the basis of vegetation and parked cars, not only doesn't meet the criteria for requesting, for granting a variance, it seems very temporary and not likely to get you what you want to, you know, ultimately, the solution that you want.
Have we, I rejected Mr. Kessler's suggestion of building the soil up around the monuments, what, two feet, nine inches?
Actually, you have no right to reject it because as long as they turn around, build a berm there and put that sign on top of it, there's nothing, because they're meeting the criteria of the ordinance.
I totally agree with Daryl. If they want to dump dirt there and build that all up.
Down and they give you the dirt you need and give you a hand that way.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Daryl. I don't think we should, we, we're not granting that they do that, but if they want to do that, it seems to me that they could meet the spirit of the ordinance that way.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
Believe me. The other way out because there's no way you're ever going to grant an ordinance without doing that. The variance.
If they do that, they don't need a variance then, so.
They would still need to comply with 18, 1814, but but that's a way of elevating the sign. Daryl, you're a very creative guy.
Just trying to help them out.
No, I, I'm, I want to help them out too. I'm trying to figure out how to do it.
I know you do.
No, we appreciate that.
So, so you want me to put it in the form of a motion? I mean, from what?
We've reached a point here where we have sort of a consensus of what we want to do if somebody wants to put it in a motion and then it gives the Legion a point to start from to come up with an alternative.
Let me, let me just run this by, I'm not making a motion yet, but it sounds like what we're saying is we're denying their request for a variance because they can do what they want to do using Daryl's approach without seeking a variance. Is that, is that accurate?
I think so.
I wouldn't phrase it that way, Rob. I mean, I would just say deny the variance. And if they want to dump a pile of dirt in front of their sign or around their sign, that's their business.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is that if they do that, then they have to comply with 1814 anyway, even, even if, I mean, it's just, right?
Yeah, they would regardless though, right? I mean, whether, whether we kind of frame this in terms of raising the sign by lower, raising the ground, right? It doesn't matter. So, you know, they, they still have to comply with the digital sign part of it, regardless of what we do with their variance.
And nobody has, are the neighbors or anybody within the notification area has sent a letter in or anything, yea or nay?
I did not hear from anyone either way.
So Ed, I guess what we're saying is if, if, if this, if the zoning board denies your application for variance, you can still proceed with what your intention is using an alternative method.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would rather work with a township. We always have. I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're really going out of the ordinary here. We're asking for the variance on it. It's, you know, we do have like special circumstances to give, we are set back so far. And someday we could own all that property, but we may not ever own it. But we do work with the neighbors and I, again, I went over and talked to, to them. The one on the west side is in Florida. Don't know if they're coming back, but I personally went over and talked to them and they didn't have an issue. So I mean, they don't have an issue with it.
Yeah. Well, we'll do what we have to do to, to take care of the problem.
But we'd rather work with it, you know, with the system.
Nick, can you clarify? So it's been noted a couple of times. Is the setback for that parcel different from the setbacks of the, on either side?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I don't understand that issue then. What, I'm not, so everybody has that setback, I would guess, along that stretch of the road. So how is that unique? I'm trying to understand it. If that's the case, I mean, maybe you could argue that there's some special conditions with that property, but yeah, so.
Are there special conditions? Because there are, there are companies trying to advertise. That's the special condition.
What's the special condition?
Everybody else, everybody else is a resident and they're a company that's trying to advertise.
Well, I, I wouldn't call them a company. I'd call them institutional. It's an institutional bulletin board, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're a nonprofit. And so we, we don't keep a lot of our money. We, we give it out in donations to the community. That's, that's our basic policy here is to help the community and the veterans. I mean, we buy our people that we have volunteering here. And it's basically a volunteer organization. So we're, you know, we're, we do a lot and depend on the community to help us. And so I, I think in turn, we have really good so, so and we're, we're just trying to work with the community like we always have.
I, I just want to explore something here and it's, it precedes the specifications within the ordinance and it falls within the purpose of the ordinance. And so looking at the purpose, the last purpose statement says through the implementation of these objectives of the sign ordinance, or through these objectives, the sign ordinance will be able to promote the appropriate, the use of appropriate signage, which in turn will enhance the economic viability of the township, ensure the health and welfare of all residents, and increase the aesthetic appearance of the streetscape. So I've heard from the applicants that there's a concern about ingress and egress of the driveway and safety related to repositioning the sign in a space that would be more visible. I have also heard that they've made the case that they've had difficulty of advertising their services and offerings and events, which we've seen evidence based on the Google Maps where they've purchased time on a temporary sign to put into a space that they've also acknowledged was not ideal for their purposes. Now, I don't, I, this is my first time on the zoning board of appeals, so I will defer to my colleagues, but I do wonder if we return back to the purpose of what the, the sign ordinance is trying to accomplish, that perhaps the spirit of what they're proposing does meet the purpose of the sign ordinance, but we're hung up on two feet, nine inches as the piece that's somewhat sticky.
I don't disagree that that, that's could be an argument. I think we need to reconcile then the criteria for granting the variance with that understanding. And so, you know, the reason that we have an ordinance, I think, in my opinion, is that we can't leave it up to the pure discretion of the board, this board or future boards to interpret the ordinance, right? And if you open it up to grant these, this a variance, even though we don't think that it meets the criteria for granting the variance, then personal favors, acquaintances, you know, any special relationship, you open the door to all kinds of interpretation and implementation of the ordinance. Jason, I totally agree with what you just said. And, you know, putting a pile of dirt probably doesn't meet the spirit of the ordinance. But we do have those criteria for granting a variance. And in my estimation, they don't meet three of them. Bill probably said the same thing. So I guess that's my problem, right? I don't like the solution to put a pile of dirt there, but I also want to maintain the integrity of the ordinance. Or change it. If we think it's a bad ordinance, we can change it. We can't change it here.
Right. That's, that's the thing that gets me, that a lot of the times, the things that come before us, we would like to change, but we can't because our hands are tied by the ordinance. You have to, you know, fulfill the spirit of the ordinance and not do what's right sometimes or good.
So let me ask the zoning board members.
It needs to be changed. Of course, it's went on for years on some things, trying to get it changed. And it just never happens.
Because there's been no appetite to change the criteria for a variance, granting a variance. I was talking about changing the part about the signs. If you can make an argument about you should have higher signs, I think that's a reasonable argument. Let's hear it. But, you know, time and time again, we brought the idea of changing the criteria and the planning commission and others outside the planning commission, Michigan Township Association. This is pretty standard boilerplate language about the conditions under which you grant a variance. That doesn't seem to be going anywhere. I agree, Daryl, is that?
And it doesn't make it right. Because I've tried to get it changed with the planning commission, as you know, Dan, and I've gotten shot down. So the planning commission has no appetite to change, at least, at least they haven't. I don't know, maybe the current makeup would, but.
And I think it's because they think the current rendition is right.
I understand that. I respect them for that. I disagree with them.
I understand that too. I respect your position on that.
Let me ask the zoning board members this. Is there anything that has been talked about in terms of actual ordinance language and the interpretation of it that they still feel foggy or uncomfortable with?
Yeah, the fourth, the fourth element.
The reason I ask that is because I think at this point, you know, we're kind of getting dangerously close to spinning our wheels. And so probably we have two conclusions that could be reached here. Either the, you know, the, the vote needs to take place on the variance, or it needs to be determined that this be tabled for a month and then ensured that our zoning administrator is at the next meeting. But I would say that the second option there would only be if there were any ordinance language that the zoning board members would prefer be interpreted or explained directly by the zoning administrator.
Ed, you have a, you have a temporary sign out there right now?
I rolled it back.
I didn't see it today, but, but the.
I usually put it out there when I have the post-service hours for veterans.
Okay.
I, when it's over, I take it back. So it's not in the way because it, it can be in the way of people driving in and out. And also it's very old. There was no lights on it. It's, the letters fall off. Not easy to change. I'll go out there and change it. It'll take me 45 minutes and pull it all those old antiquated letters off. I mean, it's kind of an eyesore for this township. I mean, I heard that they're trying, in the DVA, and I, and they wanted to beautify it. And I mean, I, I actually think this, this would be an upgrade for our post and the community because, you know, again, we, we do a lot for the community. And we're just trying to get our word out. So I mean, apparently we meet 75% of the criteria. I, I guess I thought that's what a variance was for. You could say, hey, we're going to grant you this. I mean, if they want us to throw dirt down there, we'll throw dirt down to meet it, I guess, so.
No, the reason why I ask is, is if we were to table it, I'd like to see you being able to put your sign out while it's, while it's being tabled. What?
I'm wondering, you know, I mean, it's hard to find those letters anymore. They fall off, the wind blows it, blows it in. I'm going to purchase a brand new one for probably, I don't know, 300, 400 bucks, but the appeal process is, was 250 now, so we probably wouldn't. Well, I, I think we're ready to dispose of that sign. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have, we, we're going to have more costing to move in the pillars and then drop the, drop the sign down, as you say, between them. And again, I see that as a real issue with traffic pulling in and out of here. You look at the picture there, one with the vehicles, you can clearly see that sign is, when that temporary sign is out there, it blocks things. And if the other one just had it up on top, we're not blocking traffic. We're doing Uh we're, we're doing something with the community. Uh again, if we meet seventy-five percent of the uh ordinance, uh I, I you know, have meet a hundred percent of it. That's I guess what I thought the variance was for. And we're, and again, we, we didn't, you didn't have any comments from the uh residents, but, but I did talk to them. Uh I mean, that's, we personally went over and talked and uh we're doing the best we can. Well, uphold it. I mean, we're not, we're not going anywhere. We've been here since, how long? Nineteen fifty-three uh before probably a lot of people moved into this area. And so we're, you know, we're here to stay, but we're again, we, we probably know most everybody in, in the area and uh we've, we've always, I think, done what the uh township has asked of us. So I guess our play is, you know, you grant it. And uh and if you need help changing the uh criteria down the road, we'd be glad to help. For, for other people that want to come in and put a sign up because I, we're not, we're not going to be the last ones, you know, as this community grows and more businesses come in, just like when I had my business down on Webster Road, uh it was the same thing. We uh, you know, we had to put a sign back and put it so far and and had it lit. And I mean, we, we're very happy to do that. Uh but I, I think you're probably, probably going to get more requests down the road for maybe other uh signs to go up. But I, you know, we, I think we, we're trying to move up like all the other places that you look around that have the LED signs and and we're willing to work within the uh confines of the ordinance as far as the lights. And again, we can dim it down if it's, if somebody complains uh and shut it off, like you said, a half hour before and a half hour uh after hours. Uh so we're willing to, to do what it takes to get the sign here, but then we've met seventy-five percent of the criteria. And so that's why we're asking for the variance, just thirty, what, thirty, twenty-seven inches to thirty inches.
Problem we have is you only meet seventy-five percent of the criteria. The way the ordinance is written, we, we need to meet all four of those criteria, have something we can say about all of them. And I, we don't, I think as a group, we don't see all of that. You know, I'm, I appreciate what the Legion does and the services they provide and service they do to the community. But we have an ordinance and we sort of have to comply with the ordinance.
What, what, what is the variance for then? I mean, if we, if we try to get it and I, I don't quite understand it now. We only met twenty-five or fifty percent of it, but again, I think we have a special case here. It's not like we have all, all the right of way to go out and, and like this high school does or as you mentioned, fast eddies. We, we're, we're landlocked here and uh, you know, we can so we're, that's why we're asking for this. If, if we didn't, if we didn't, if we had plenty of room, you, you probably wouldn't even hear from us on this. We, we would put it up and be done with it. But since we are the only one here in a residential area, uh we, that's, that's why we're, we're coming to you to ask for this. So yeah, I guess if you can see your way to do it, if you have to table it and talk to somebody else, then uh we'll go with that and see what happens.
At this point, I don't think tabling it will really solve your problem because the ordinance isn't going to change in a month. And you know, I, to me, I like the solution of putting it up on a post. And it's going to be more visible that way probably than, than down on the ground where it is now.
Yeah, then we're talking, what'd you say, ten feet, you know, ten feet in height? We're only looking at thirty inches total height. I mean, it's, it's, yes, it's less expense for us to do it uh because we, and we don't have a big budget because we are a nonprofit. Basically all volunteer here. So um you know, that's unfortunately, we don't have millions of dollars to just spend out there. So I mean, we're, it's a, we're working, we're working, taking a third with our uh auxiliary unit. And we're taking a third from the Sons of American Legion and we're taking a third from the American Legion. Uh we, we all had to come to an agreement on what sign and where to place it. It's been a long process. But we, we all agreed to uh to uh do this with a sign. So we're I, I guess, make your decision and then we'll, we'll go on and I appreciate your time.
Anybody want to make a motion about how we feel about their request? Because I, you know, like Nick said earlier, we're at the point now where I think we're, we're spinning our tires. That I don't think we can come up with a, an answer where we can, you know, realistically grant them a variance.
I'm, I'm inviting my tongue a little bit here. Um also, and, and I know you're gonna, you're probably gonna deny us and that, that's fine. But you're talking about precedent. I remember when the township itself sign was taken down and the one that's put up there now, it was not in compliance with the ordinance at the time and they got a uh they did a or uh variance on that. So the precedent was already set with the township itself. Of course, that was a few years ago and I think things have changed since then. But um so a precedent has already been done and there is a variance process. Why have it if we can't get one for thirty inches? That's all I have to say.
Does anyone recall when?
Can I say something?
Situation happened?
I, I don't remember the township. You know, that was before my time with the township sign, I think.
I think that was after we put that addition on with the township. But they ended up putting that sign out there. That's been almost, I'd have to do some, uh go back and look.
Twenty or twenty-five years, probably.
Yeah, yeah, probably has.
We didn't have a digital signed ordinance until two thousand fourteen, if I recall.
No, it was, it was, it was a sign that they, they erected up there because people complained because the township was a wealth of information all the time with all the programs that went on and they needed a boarded sign up there or a, a sign that would give messages. So they circumvented the ordinance at that time. And I think probably Shane Boldy was the superintendent at the time, maybe, or even before Shane. So that's where we're going back that far. So the precedent's already been set. That's all I'm saying. And there is a variance, there is a, you know, process to do this and we're talking thirty inches. And, and you want to go higher. I mean, higher's good, but thirty inches isn't. I, it, it just doesn't, I'm compute to me.
And we have, again, uh no objections from the, from the community and it wasn't lack to them not sending it back because um I notified my, I personally walked over and talked to them.
You know, Ed, I appreciate that. And it's, it's kind of a, an anomaly. The obje- objection uh of a, of, of a neighbor. It doesn't even play a role in the four criteria. The neighbors have to be notified and, and I'm persuaded by that frankly, but it's not one of the four criteria. Doesn't make any sense, but that's, that's what we have to work with. We're just trying to figure out a way of fashioning this so that you can do what you want to do and, and, and yet we still uphold our obligation to enforce the ordinance.
Okay, I do think it makes sense. I mean, neighbors come and go, right? Uh I, I think the ordinance should not be built around neighbors' preferences necessarily because neighbors come and go.
No question. But we do have to give them notice under the ordinance.
We do. Yeah, you're right. So I think Rob, you had started on a, a motion, I believe.
Maybe, you know, we could, we could put up a ten-foot sign and then have the neighbors uh plant more trees there that are twelve feet high. So where, where are we at then? I mean.
That same argument can be applied to what you have now though, right? It, it's just the vegetation's the problem. So whether the vegetation blocks the current sign or vegetation blocks the ten-foot sign, I guess I don't really see the difference between those two situations.
We can take down the vegetation on, on the uh uh the east side and the vegetation on the, on the west uh is a little, the tree's a little higher. Uh I mean, I can talk to the neighbors, say, hey, can we, can we prune that up? I mean, um I, I kind of think raising it up is not going to be a, a, a help to us or the neighbors. I think it tends to maybe shine down in their houses a bit more. It's like a big spotlight out there on a pole. I mean, we do have a lighted flagpole, but uh that's, that's part of our uh uh Legion. Uh so uh I don't, I, I think it's time, there is time for a variance to be uh accepted. And I don't think we're really, other than meeting the, the one height criteria. You, you can always say no, but again, things are going to change at some point. Uh somebody else is going to come in and maybe with a lot more money than we have and it's the way things I see happen. I, you know, I, I know it doesn't, like you say, it doesn't meet the ordinance, but I guess that's all I have.
I know you've made the, you, you've made the argument of adding dirt, uh putting a berm up there. But wouldn't it be better if the township actually passed something? So that people didn't get around ordinances by doing things like that? I mean, I'm off our, I think it's, it's a fantastic solution, but it's sort of like, um, it's not uh getting uh things all that you want solved. You want to be able to make the decision or not.
All right, I'll, I'll.
I don't think they're asking for a whole lot. I think they're just gonna have to sign up thirty inches. I think in order for them to raise that sign up to ten feet, it's going to increase the cost, probably somewhere around four or five thousand dollars to raise that sign up ten feet.
I, I, I'll make a motion, uh but I'd like to preface my con- my motion with a comment. I, I think that uh getting the neighbors on the east and west to cooperate, um especially the neighbor on the east by cutting down all that foliage. Uh and I also think that if you took the existing sign and put into that location where the existing sign is, all of the illumination and the type of digital sign you want between the monuments. Um I think you could actually achieve more than putting it up higher. Um there, there are ways and you wouldn't have to, uh as I understand it, you wouldn't have to seek a variance under that approach. And for that reason, I would move that we deny the request for a variance.
Anybody? And?
I was gonna say, I second the Rob's motion.
In favor, let's have a vote here. All in favor, deny all the variants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Variance has been denied.
Thank you very much.
We move on to uh other business. There is there any other business in the meeting?
I have two things. First of all, I, I know that was a difficult, difficult decision to go through, but I appreciate everybody putting their thought into it. I personally, you know, as, as the township planner, I'm interested in looking at the sign ordinance. Um, you know, thankfully I have a planning commission chair here so he can hear me saying that in, in real time. So
It's been said.
I think that's some, some good food for thought. Um I also did just want to introduce, because we don't see you all that often. Um I do have my planning intern, uh Felicia with us this evening. She goes by Fee. Her camera's off, but I asked her to come tonight just so she could see what a, how is ZBA meeting goes. Uh seeing the process and the uh often, you know, difficult decisions that have to be made. So just wanted to uh introduce her. And then also um you know, if any of you want to have a conversation about, you know, reviewing ordinance language, you know, regardless of what it is, uh you know, feel free to, to reach out to me. Um as far as I'm aware, that's all I have.
The, uh, under the other business, at one point we talked about getting books of the codes of ordinance so we can have a printed page. Uh Rob has one, I think. I would like one. Is that something that can be made available to us?
Yeah, I, I received this book, Three Ring Binder, when I first joined the ZBA. And it is woefully out of date. Woefully, it's embarrassing. Um so I would really appreciate it if we could all get a three-ring binder with the latest, greatest version of the ordinance.
Does it have the entire zoning ordinance in there?
It's, it's just the zo- the zoning ordinance, the, everything related to the zoning.
I mean, also, you know, Munich code, is it called Münich code? I forget. Um the, the, the ordinance on on that website is two thousand eighteen. So that even is a few years out of date. So it would be good to update that. And I think I've been asking to have that done. I don't know if there's a cost to do so. Um yeah, okay. I mean, there's no good time to, to update that because we're always changing the ordinance, but you know, three years old seems a little old.
I, I have good news for you on that front. The board approved, approved funding to have that updated last night.
Oh, awesome. Great.
Along with, with a slew of, of other things that we've been asking for. So that will be updated whether we stay with Munich code or look at another service. I don't know. I'm assuming we'll stay with Munich code, but um excuse me, it will be updated. And then going forward, uh the intention is that uh either the clerk or myself will, will keep that updated moving forward.
Great.
Um as for the binders, I don't see any issue with that.
Well, I just, it just shows my age, you know, I, I, I can go online and, and read the updated supposedly updated version, but I sure like the uh printed page.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Does that include, so I'm looking at the four criteria for approval of variances and the language is a bit squishy in terms of practical difficulties or deprivation of uh rights. Does that include clear articulation of specific criteria that would support us in making interpretations like what we've just done with this particular applicant?
I, I think it has to be very clearly outlined um by the applicant, what those circumstances are. Um obviously other communities use different language, but like was stated, the criteria that we have in our ordinance is pretty boilerplate and there's a significant amount of case law that backs it up in terms of those four criteria. Um, you know, personally, I'm not opposed to looking at those criteria again, but obviously that's at the pleasure of the planning commission and whether they're interested in doing that or not.
I would add though, that you know, I, I think there is, like you're saying, Jason, there's some squishiness in that language. So you know, one, one thing we could do to improve the section if we're not changing the criteria, which uh I'm open to those arguments would be just to try to clarify the language a little bit. And you know, because I think that Rob and I, for example, read the same language and probably have different conclusions on, on what it means, right? And fair enough, right?
It is, that's true.
Well, I mean.
But we, we probably could do a better job of just providing examples or clarifying the language that's there.
I had a, a lot of trouble. Um you know, for me, I thought that there were practical difficulties, but I als- I, I stood back because, you know, I, I'm new to this board, not, not quite sure how to um, well, the practical, great, but in that language.
Yeah, the practical difficulties, I don't disagree, but are they peculiar to the land, the structure or building involved? And so that, that's where I think there is some squishiness. When I've looked into this, you know, shrubbery or foliage does not include special conditions or circumstance.
Right.
It's often the shape of the lot or the physical uh lot, like there's a, there's a huge boulder or something in the way or uh you know, something a little bit more permanent than foliage. Reenering is what the special condition is kind of tied to.
Right.
Yeah.
The other problem is that the, the issue that I took before the planning commission was I thought a simple solution. I wanted to change one word from and to or. Because you need all four criteria. You can't, you can't. You can't, you can't quibble. You have to have all four. And if you don't have all four, you have to deny the variance. And rarely does an applicant come in with all four. I thought, we, there was one case where a guy wanted to put up a fence and um, his house was located on a curve of a street so that when the cars turned to go around the corner, the headlights went right into his house. That was a special circumstance. And I, and I, I really, we ended up granting the variance for the guy to put up a fence. But.
No, I under, I I understand. So.
So I guess on that note, I'd like to point out, uh, you know, for anyone, regardless of how long they've been on the zoning board of appeals, this coming Thursday, or excuse me, not this coming Thursday, uh, Thursday, May twenty-seven, so next Thursday, uh, the Michigan Association of Planning is offering a virtual zoning board of appeals workshop. Um, that the township will happily pay for that for anyone who wants to attend that. Um, but of course, I need to know sooner than later. Um, that would have, in addition to the actual training, uh, you'd also have a Michigan Association of Planning zoning board of appeals guidebook nailed to your residence. Um, and then the, it's a, a joint training between the Michigan Association of Planning um, and Emmett County, uh, up near Mackinac City. So for any of you who are interested in that, please let me know.
I assume this is zooming?
Yes. They're having it on site for the folks that live in Emmett County, but they're also doing virtual at the same time.
I might be interested in doing that. Uh, I think I did one years ago, but it'd be good to do it again, maybe.
I I've been to a couple, and the attorneys that represent townships say never grant a variance.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the point, or the, the problem, right? Because
It is the problem.
It's, it's a quasi judicial board. And so, you know, anyone in the community who was upset by the ZBA's decision could sue the township. And the township would have to defend their granting of the variance. And so that's where the issue comes in with with granting them. But of course, I feel like I'm trying to lecture a lawyer right now, so I'll shut up, Rob.
No, I, it's, it's really unfortunate.
It is.
Well, having been on the other side of creating ordinance language, I also know that that's not an exact process, and you often don't get it right uh, the first time or the second time or the third time. And so there's articulation between the ZBA and the planning commission that should occur. And so I know Dan has done that in the past. So.
I I've had times when I've written draft language and brought it to you all at the planning commission. And you read something and it, you, you all come to a conclusion that's completely different than what I intended. And trying to figure out how sometimes is difficult, but you know, that's ordinance language. And really, I think anything in in laws, you can come to a different interpretation sometimes.
But it's still, there's some pretty divisive language in here. Eighteen point two, any sign not expressly permitted is prohibited. How do you get around that?
Yeah, I personally, whether the planning commission takes it up or not, am intending to do some more uh, research on the sign ordinance, just to see if there are any specific improvements that I can recommend.
Is there any input you can give us on when we're going to start meeting in person again instead of virtually?
Um, I don't. Uh, the Thursday, May twenty-seventh, that same day, uh, I believe is when the county commission will meet um, and determine on if they're going to extend the local state of emergency or not. Um, but, you know, at the same time, I'm also aware that at least for those that are vaccinated, most of the mask orders have been lifted. So um, I really don't. But as soon as I hear something from Karen, uh, Superintendent Hildebrand, I'll let you all know. I know that's not the best answer, Bill. I apologize, but hoping to have something more conclusive soon.
We move on to additional public comment. Anybody would like to say, I don't think there's any public left. But make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We do have a public left.
Oh, okay.
I was just watching, actually. I I think it was kind of a mistake, but I know what you guys have to go through, so. No, it's hard for you guys to translate the the language and everything like that. But I don't think they were asking that much. I don't think they were asking for something astronomical, you know, like, it'd be, you know, like asking to do something crazy. I think they were actually asking for something pretty basic, pretty simple. And the grant of variance, yeah, I understand, you gotta be careful about being sued and everything. But I also understand that you gotta cooperate, but everybody's gotta cooperate, you know, even now. They have to, you have to, everybody's gotta come to some kind of equal conclusion, you know what I mean? Instead of just saying, no, absolutely not. You know, now they're gone, they're off mad somewhere now because they were granted a variance. They're gonna go put a berm out there and sort of undermines what you guys are trying to accomplish. You know what I mean? There, it, it, wouldn't it be better for you to say, yeah, you can put it up there, we'll let you uh, don't undermine this. Don't, don't go for a berm up there or nothing like that. Just do, you know, we'll let you rather than make them go put a berm up. To me, that's just my opinion, though. And I respect you guys. You can't imagine how much I respect what you guys do. I know it's hard. I know that telling people no is really hard, you know what I mean? But just for me, I I I can then, I can fathom why that wouldn't be something that would be allowed. It's not a big ask, you know? That's all, that's all I have to say.
Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn or respond?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. My battery's about out.
Second, I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Have a good day.
Good to see all of you. Stay healthy.